We are recording.
Terrific. And it is six o'clock. All the stars, at least in here, are aligned. All right, let's get started. Welcome, everybody. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, October s- it's not. It's, uh, it's actually Monday, October 21st. There we go. Uh, Monday, October 21st. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Just as, uh, to advise anyone who would come forward, if you're here to speak on an issue, please provide your name and address into the microphone and let us know what's on your mind. If you are here, if you are here for an item on the agenda, we will, um, do everything possible to give you an opportunity to speak if you wish. So, um, at this time, mm, I would like to-
To make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Um, I think we've got to take the oath of office first. So, at this time, I would, um, like to invite, um, our judge to administer the oath of office to Nicole McKeefry, new trustee-at-large.
I'll go down by you.
I was so excited to make a motion.
He usually goes out the back door when he sees you.
That's right. Is that Judge Rathbrenn?
So if you'll raise your right hand, Mark, please. P. F. N. I, Nicole McKeefry.
I, Nicole McKeefry.
Having been appointed to the office of the Village of Swamaco Trustee at large, swear or firm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and State of Wisconsin. And will faithfully discharge the duties of set office to the best of my ability.
Pen's right on the clip.
Here's a pen.
Doesn't trustee McKeefry get to keep that pen now? You'll have to discuss that with the clerk. All right, um, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move on to item number four. Item number four this evening is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I would like to make a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
And I second.
So we have a motion from trustee Romes and a second from trustee McKeefry to approve this evening's agenda. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Excellent. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, item number six this evening. Item number six is our public appearances. If there's anyone in the audience who is here for an item not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to come forward, provide your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind. Is there anyone here for an item not on the agenda? Seeing no one? Item number seven this evening is the consent agenda. The consent agenda today consists of previous minutes of the village board dated October 7th, 2024, and October 10th, 2024. Item B, September 2024 Fire Department Report. Item C, September 2024 Recreation Report. Item D, August 2024 Treasurers Report. And item E, Amendment to Chives Incorporated 1749 Riverside Drive Combination Class B Malt Beverage and Class B Liquor License to Include 1026 2024 for Vicry Village Fall Fest. Is there a motion or comment on the agenda, on the consent agenda?
Well, I was just wondering, and I want to bring it up because there's a lot of new people here. Is, is the, um, the Mink Ranch tenant, are they paying their utility bills? I just want to make sure that utility customers aren't doing it.
Yes.
I would assume that nothing's changed.
Okay. Just checking. Um, motion to approve consent agenda?
So I have a motion from trustee Eckert to approve the consent agenda. Um, and there was a second from trustee Romes. Are any other further comments or questions from the board? Very well, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Item number eight this evening is the administrative, uh, administrative items. Item 8A is the Brown County Sheriff's Office 2025-2027 Contract. Administrator Kager, if you would.
Thank you. So this is just a continuation from the October 7th Village Board meeting. There were some questions that were answered at the October 10th, uh, Village Board Budget Day meeting. Uh, if there are any other questions, I would be happy to try and compose. Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to potentially approve the Brown County Police Services Agreement for the years 25 through 27.
I do have one quick question, if I may.
Sure.
So, we received this. What does 2019, it's not relevant, I'm not good, it's not going to change how we look at the motion on approving, but 2020 to 2021 is a huge leap. What was 2019 like? Was 2020 a dip? Or was there something-
Well, 2020 would have been a COVID.
I understand that.
They had a lot of less generated, self-generated.
Was 2019 similar to 2021, or was there some, for some reason, some big increase?
19 would have been a COVID year likely and would have been similar to 2000, so-
I understand that logic.
The direction, the direction, if I remember appropriately at the time, from the Sheriff's Department, they were limiting contacts, um, on the road.
So, no, we don't have 2019.
Is that the reason for the decrease, in your opinion? When we look at a number of 541 to 4,727, do you believe that's because of COVID?
For the year 2020, yes, that is correct. We were advised, uh, we were directed to limit our contacts during that-
So I'm just going to scribble that year out as skewed data. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions with regard to, um, the, uh, contract? What we have before us this evening on the contract is a move to approve or reject the Brown County Police Services Agreement for the years of 2025-2027.
I'm willing to make a motion.
Please do.
I'd like to move that we approve the Brown County Police Services Agreement for the years of 2025 through 2027.
Thank you. Trustee Romes has made a motion to approve the Brown County Police Services Agreement for the years of 2025 through 2027.
Second.
And I have a second from trustee Andrews. Any other further questions or discussion on this item from the board? Roll call, please.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee McKeefry.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero.
All right. Administrative items. Item 8B this evening is an amendment to the liquor ordinance regarding the 2025 NFL Draft Week. Administrator Kager.
Thank you. This was a request from trustee Netto to have a discussion about potential changes uh, with our liquor laws as it relates to the NFL draft. This was referred to the Public Health and Safety Committee, uh, a few months ago, August 20th. The committee recommended no changes, but you as a village board still have the authority to make changes if, if you see fit. Deputy Kezak is here to answer some questions if you have them. Otherwise, I'll, I'll put this back on the village board for discussion.
And I said, yeah, put it on, because anything's worth talking about. I could go either way on things, so, I don't, convince me.
I just think we're going to be busy.
Okay.
And the only way we're going to bring people in the village is to allow the businesses to open up. You go down to downtown Swamaco and you walk into one of the establishments and you're going to wait three hours for food. There's five, uh, five other establishments right there that are within walking distance. Where people will be able to walk around historic downtown Swamaco. We're going to have a lot of Airbnbs, people coming in out of town. So to buy a drink and walk down the street, I don't think is out of the realm. And I think we need to open up the businesses so we can allow more people.
There's like, um, a few choices here, like, um, close at 4:00 AM.
No.
Okay, I mean, you'd have to staff it longer, too. To purchase and consume streets, on streets and sidewalks, allow licensed facilities to use outdoor space? I mean, what are you proposing?
Well, we have the outdoor spaces.
Okay.
Do it on the premise. Pretty much everybody has an outdoor area. To allow these outdoor areas to open up where we can have, have a little more capacity. We're looking at millions of dollars that is coming to Green Bay. And I just feel we're dropping the ball if we don't allow this.
Okay, so you're saying parking lots, like, a bar's parking lot?
I would say the premise that we are able to use. And if we want to open the parking lots so people can put a tent up or whatever to maximize their capacities and maximize what we can do as a village.
And that would be that 90 period?
Yep.
What do you guys think?
Is there any, I, I, we haven't heard anything solid from the city of Green Bay of them doing something similar. We, the, the note here, Alex, says that we, they've had conversations, but no firm conclusions, and that's where we're sitting?
Yeah, I did talk to a rep from Ashwabanon and Green Bay. Green Bay, the only change that they're considering is they do allow for the alcoholic beverages to be, uh, consumed in parking lots if you apply for a permit to do so. And currently, their limit is a three-day, uh, period, and they're going to allow it potentially up to seven. So they're having it for seven days. But that's something I believe you can do already, and correct me if I'm wrong, you can apply for an extension of your premise for a certain amount of time for an event. So it's something that you can do today within the confines of our code, unless, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Do we know what the limitation on that time is, Alex?
I do not off the top of my head.
Uh, Michelle, do you know the answer to that?
The limitation on the time?
How many days?
I don't think it's spelled out in our ordinance.
I think it might be silent.
Yeah.
So we would be allowed to provide through board action, a temporary liquor license to extend that premises to include the parking lot or whatever region is defined as, to rest of our knowledge tonight, for the extended period that we want it to be.
Yeah, I believe it's already an avenue you can take.
And is that the intent of, from the, I'm just looking at you because you brought it up. Was it the intent is just to expand an already licensed facility? Or to allow it throughout the village? For instance, like, I could have a beer, um, open it at, say, Station One, and then walk over to, say, Pelkins or whatever.
Correct.
Your idea would be to just open it up across the village overall. So I could do the same thing if I'm walking down a street in my subdivision. I could have a beer and walk right down that street with an open beer.
Correct.
Okay. So for me, I, I look at this as, as more of a question of either, it shouldn't be an exception. Either we choose to make it something that a citizen in Swamaco can do as a rule. If you're a citizen of Swamaco, you're allowed to drink out in public. I don't think we would make it an exception just because there's potential visitors in town. I understand the idea of extending a license, right? So for me, it becomes more of that. If I'm going to vote for something, I'm going to vote to determine whether or not we just remove the open liquor law or open drinks in public law, if that's even something that can be done. But is that even legal by the, is that a state law? Is, is that a state regulation?
There's a reason for the exception to the cities and the villages, uh, ordinance is because it is state law that you can't do that.
Okay, so we're limited anyway. So we're limited period, and we can only go with an exception, and the exception only applies to licensed liquor locations and places that the village looks at, potentially, say, it's a church picnic, which typically isn't a licensed place, but we're allowed to ha- or licensed place, but we're allowed to have a temporary time period where a church can have liquor on their premises.
That is correct.
Okay.
That would be by permit only.
Okay. I'm clear. Others?
So what, what are we, I, I'm hearing a couple of things. So there's extension of the sale of alcohol within the, the boundaries of the property, right? So that's one. The other one I'm hearing is being able to, just using the example Hickory Village, to be able to navigate around the village from establishment to, to establishment carrying an open container. Or am I hearing I want to open it all to Swamaco?
So you can't do that, from what we've, oh, unless by permit?
No, you can.
Like, if we look at all of, I, I see what you're saying. I'm sorry.
If you're making the exception, how are you going to designate, no, I'm sorry, you can only do this in Vicry Village. Right. You can only do this within 300 feet of this, that, or the other place. Or do you do it in all of Swamaco? So, you know, I, that's, I think the exception is for all of Swamaco, correct?
Correct. Because we will have all the Airbnb's.
So.
And is that something we can legally permit? Based on state law? I don't know the answer to that.
You can adopt an exception, just like the city of-
Of Green Bay is.
Okay.
Ashwabanon.
So that's our, that's our sandbox. We have to define the area, the period of time, and that area can be all of Swamaco or portions of it.
Any concerns for safety if we were to endeavor, go down this endeavor?
From a law enforcement perspective, yes. Uh, there is extreme safety in that. You're talking about quite a length of area from Vicry Village to, say, the bars on Lion Hill Road. We don't want people, we're, it's dark up here. City of Green Bay and the village of Ashwabanon, from their exception perspective, is game days, and it's usually within the stadium district where they allow on the road and the sidewalk. Now, you're talking hundreds of thousands of people. So, roads are already shut down an hour prior to the game. There's just too many people from a public perspective to try to deter them from drinking and walking down the road. Uh, we would have a little bit more of an opportunity to deter that in our area. So, that would be our response.
So, let, let me ask a couple of questions if I, if I might. So currently, if a person is staying at an Airbnb and they want to have an open intoxicant, they can have that open intoxicant at that Airbnb or anywhere of the confines of that Airbnb property, correct?
That is correct, yes.
If they exit their driveway with that open intoxicant in a vehicle, whether it's a UTV, ATV, or, or a vehicle that's against the law, correct?
Then the liquor law violations would be-
So, bars, local drinking establishments, Ticks Harbor Lights, for example. You have an outside, outside area where folks are allowed to drink, correct?
Correct.
And all of the other bars have outside areas that, where folks are allowed open intoxicants. However, if they get into a vehicle and they drive away, again, it's against the law, correct?
That is correct.
Private property, so my yard, I already know, I already know the answer to this because I do do this. I can go ahead and open an open intoxicant in, on my property, however, if I get in the vehicle and I drive away, it's against the law. Lastly, licensed facilities. So, these are all facilities that are typically licensed, bars being, I'm referring to. These are licensed facilities that have individuals who presumably are trained to the laws and they're checking IDs. What would stop someone to purchase a beverage at a, a bar, right? If, if we were able to open up the whole village of Swamaco, purchase a, a drink, an intoxicant at a bar, leave that establishment down the road and hand it off to a kid? Nothing, right? So, my last point on this is public health and safety. So, we've entrusted and charged public health and safety with overviewing these things, looking at these things, and these are individuals, I trust the folks in public health and safety. That's why they're in that position. I think that Green Bay is a lot different situation. It's, it's the stadium district. And thank God that they get to patrol it and we don't have to. I'm sorry, you have to. But I, I, if we're not going to follow what public health and safety, um, tells us, then I think we need to look at disbanding public health and safety. Maybe we don't need them anymore. Maybe this board is more intelligent in terms of making decisions, you know, than public health and safety. I don't think we're at that point. So I'm inclined to go with public health and safety, and for the reasons I mentioned, you can already drink at an Airbnb, you can already go outside to, outside bar areas, you can, uh, have drinks in your own prop, your intoxicants on your own private property or licensed facilities. Um, I'm inclined to leave it where, where it's at.
And, if those areas aren't adequate for your particular needs, you can ask for an amendment, temporary amendment, right? To allow people further. So it feels to me like we have a process that allows people to do all of these things that we seek, or that is sought. It's just, it's not going to be willy-nilly. It's going to be, there's going to be a controlled area that's pre-approved.
Well, I can tell you one thing, you know, I, I live on Wildwood Drive, you know, which is a pretty quiet road, and I can imagine somebody is probably going to go ahead and, you know, there'll be some folks who, you know, want to rent out their homes and things like that. The last thing I want to deal with is, you know, a bunch of people having a really, really good time marching down the street with open intoxicants, you know, down the road. You got, you can do that in your home, you can do that at an Airbnb, you can do that in a bar. But, you know, I, I don't need you, i- in the dark. I mean, our roads don't have lights. I mean, if these people are going to be consuming alcohol and deciding you're going to walk from Vicry Village home to Wildwood, um, you're going to be walking along a pretty lonely and dark street. So, I, I just, I think it's a bigger-
In our, in our current process, in order for them to do that, they would have to file for a temporary use permit to use that street. So, right?
No.
No?
I'm talking about an individual who goes, let's say they go to Ticks Place. They go to Harbor Lights. They have some drinks, they take a couple, throw them in their pockets for the, you know, walk to wherever they're staying, right?
You're talking about a carte blanche then, if we just make it carte blanche?
Well, if we approved it. So now they're going to be walking down, you know, that dark road, which is thin in the first place, and, and now we're, are we putting people at risk? I, I just, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disposed to making the change, but I'm only one vote. Others?
Well, there's, there's five different issues.
Can we come back to you?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Um, trustee Andrews just had his hand up, and then trustee Eckert.
So, I, I also agree with, um, health and safety's recommendations, and we, we leave it the way it is. It's, it's still adequate. People can drink at the establishments, and people can drink on, at the Airbnb and on the property where they're staying, and I think it's fine the way it is.
Trustee Eckert?
So there's, there's five issues here. Obviously, we don't want them to go until 4:00 AM. Um, let's see. Okay, throughout the streets, I'm not wild about that either. Allow licensed facilities to use their outdoor spaces for, and parking lots? I, I mean, that one's a possibility, but like you said, there's already a process. Are you proposing we just allow it that nine day without the process, or? What, what do you think?
I would say a seven day is plenty. Draft is three days. But we're going to have people coming in. We've already set up an ordinance with the Airbnbs that they can, they have to be open for so long, rent it out so many days. I guess so, by me, what I'm looking at is we have an Airbnb right next to the bar. Why would? If you want to grab a beer, or even a couple beers, to walk home, you're going 300 feet, not even.
Let me ask a question. Is it legal to sell a person a beer from your bar, unopened it in a package, and have them take it to the Airbnb?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But you got to, then you're with the stickers.
I don't know what that means.
You got to put a sticker over it.
Okay.
It doesn't take much to rip a sticker off.
No.
I can't control it once I get outside, neither can any other bar.
Yep.
Legally, you can come in, as long as you got a sticker on that cocktail in your vehicle, that is not an open intoxicant. Say you want to buy a 12-pack of Bushlight, they come in 30-packs. I give you a 12-pack out of that 30, that is considered an open intoxicant.
And so long as I don't open?
No.
Oh.
The box is open. That is considered an open intoxicant.
Is that right? So the, the cans aren't open, the boxes, that's an open intoxicant?
There's different laws regarding that. In regards to an open intoxicant, the container has to be open. In regards to what Mr. Netto was talking about, selling a 12-pack out of a 30-pack, it, it's not necessarily an open intoxicant, but if it's under, somebody under 21, it's carrying intoxicant.
Under 21?
Yep. So, it's necessarily not an open intoxicant.
You wouldn't sell-
The container itself would have to be open to be considered an open intoxicant.
But a bar can't sell even a one can out of a case to a someone under 21 anyway?
No, with the sealment laws, um, the opening would have to be sealed, just like a cocktail, if you, if you made a cocktail, the seal, the seal had to be, would have to be intact for it to be considered not an open intoxicant.
Is this, how, how does this pertain to what we're, the, what, what we have in front of us?
Well, I think one of trustee Netto's points was, is that, if a bar is adjacent to an Airbnb, then the idea might be is that a person might leave that bar with their, um, open drink and walk over to the Airbnb. That's what I gathered from what you said. Yeah. And my, my point is, is that all that person has to do is either not finish that drink or have it sealed to then walk over to the Airbnb. And they would be legal. Is that, I mean, I'm not an expert at this. You two, I see as experts, so am I wrong?
Right now, yes.
Yes, I am wrong. I, I can accept it. I'm wrong often. That's okay.
If Mr. Netto wanted to sell a drink and it sealed it for somebody to walk 300 feet to their Airbnb, that's legal.
Okay.
As soon as they break the seal en route,
Right.
are now violating our open liquor law.
Yeah, as soon as I-
But that's the individual.
Right, as soon as I jump in my car with an open beer, I break the law too.
Right.
Right, so, yeah. Okay.
You can, you can take your, you can take your dog for a walk around the block with a sealed can of beer in your pocket.
Right.
If you open that up and you start walking your dog with one hand and you've got the open intoxicant in the other hand, now it's against the law.
I agree. And that's my point, is that we're talking about a short-
Now, if we change this, if we change this, it wouldn't, for nine days, that wouldn't be against the law. If we're going to follow something that maybe Ashwabanon or Green Bay has, do we know of any, um, establishments that are planning to get together and close streets to have a festival? So I'm thinking Hickory Village. So, are we, do we have anybody applying to do something like that? Because now I could see a conversation around, if I'm at Hickory Village and I want to walk from Station One to Chives. So, that's, so the question is, is that legal to do that? But, but we'd have to have permitting in the parking lot of both. Right?
And then you have to, and then you have to have, um, management of that area, which is going to be enforcement.
Right. Right. But if, if, do we know if any establishments are even in conversation about doing something like this?
Well, we haven't had any yet, but that, again, that's another process that we already have in place that you, you could have a block party permit. We've already got that in our code. So there's nothing that you need to do to make that happen.
And at the end of the day, it's surprising, we're, we're probably actually agreeing here. I feel like we're, we have a process in place to make this happen. If, if a bar wants to have more of their property available to someone who wants a drink, they can request an amendment or a special permit. If Vicry Village wants it, same thing. And if someone wants to go from a bar to another facility nearby, they simply have to get the sealed label and control themselves from the bar to where they're going and not drink it. And if they do drink it, then in that amount of time, you got to catch them. So I feel like we're, we already have a, we have a process in place here, and I'm not sure why we would change it, because we can't change it completely. Because we can't change it completely. State law says so.
We can't change it completely forever, no.
Right. So why don't we just stay with it? And that's maybe, I guess that'll be the last thing I'll ask before I keep my, my trap shut. What is the advantage of having a change like this over just individual temporary permit?
I'm not the expert in that area. Be a bar owner would be the expert.
Asking the question.
I would just, I would do it, just for the simple fact is we have an amendment that we can always fall back on. Say the village has something big going on, coming up in the future. We already have it amended. Everything is already amended that we can go back in, change the dates, and it's already set in stone.
Uh, Mr. Andrews, Trustee Andrews had one more comment.
One more comment. So we all agree, we already have the processes in place. And if establishments want to, um, do something within their confines, they can apply for permits. So it, it's all good. And the bar owner can sell a beer that someone can take with them if they walk over because it's going to be sealed. So every, we, we have all the processes there, so I don't understand where, where the conversation is going.
Okay. Was there, was there someone in the audience who wanted to speak on this? I can open it up for public comment, or I can make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to open up the discussion for public comment.
I would like to second that motion.
Thank you. So I offered a motion to open this up for public comment. The second was offered by Trustee Romes. Any other further comments or questions? All those in favor of opening up this discussion for public comment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, you can come forward now, provide your name and address, and let us know where you stand on this issue. Thank you.
Hi, Sue Yashik, 2414 Long Tail Beach Lane.
Good evening.
Um, I've been working with downtown Green Bay and the Broadway District Leadership Team since April to help them plan for their draft events. Because they're three miles from Lambeau, and they have a lot of thousands of people coming in town, they're working very diligently to open up all of their businesses, to take advantage of the revenue, as we can all understand. They are, at this point, planning to close Broadway, I believe two or three blocks, Wednesday to Saturday. I'm not sure if it's all day or just evenings. They're planning nonprofit bouillot contests. Shipyard, if they get organized, is going to have craft beer events, fireworks, bands on Wednesday and Saturday night, because there's a, they have to be very careful not to overlap with the draft. The NFL has very explicit requirements. The Broadway District in particular is working, their marketing team with all of their bars and restaurants for draft special meals and beverages to draw excitement and bring people in. So I, you know, I don't have a, a particular opinion either way. You know, this is for you to decide, but if your, if your intent is to bring business to Swamaco and create opportunity for our local establishments to take advantage of the draft, I can tell you as a resident, I wasn't aware of getting a sticker to go to another bar. I typically don't do that, but I don't think other people are either. So the point, the purpose to me would be, and again, just listening and adding some perspective, you want to draw people, you want to tell them, hey, we have stuff going on, and you can go within Vickory Village and, you know, experience Swamaco. I don't know if, you know, particular bars have more capability to support that or interest, but it's an opportunity. And I also am hearing, a lot of local people aren't necessarily interested in going down to the draft every day. It's crowded, it's a small area, and there may be a population that is interested in taking advantage of some of the local excitement or trying another town. So I'm just throwing that out from perspective. And what I'm hearing from Green Bay, I don't think Pierce is doing a lot. I don't know about Ashwabandhan, but they're working really hard to try and make it a big deal and take advantage of, of the revenue and the exposure to the businesses that, that they otherwise may not have. So I just thought I'd share that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like we just got a preview of some of the events in Green Bay.
That's right.
All right. Anyone else?
Well, I think it's good to, oh, yeah, that's right.
Sorry. Anyone else wish to come forward to speak on this item?
Motion to close.
Yep. So, uh, Trustee Romes has offered a motion to close public discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
And I have a second to close public discussion on this item from Trustee Eckert. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, let's finish our discussion on this. Any other last comments?
Well, I think it's good to talk about. I don't think that ever hurts to do. But, um, we can table it for tonight if something would come up too. I mean, we have the time. Yeah, no.
It seems to me like, from my perspective, I would be willing to have this more open, but also limited to certain areas, like Vickory Village, for example, where it's logical for people to be walking within, you know, a number of establishments within a small area. The concern I have would be we don't have additional law enforcement planned and the, or possibly the means to bring that in, which may, may be a big concern. If it's just an all or nothing approach, that's concerning to me. And I think that we wouldn't want to be so broad with it.
What if we opened it up so many, so close to all the establishments? Say a mile?
Something limited towards like where we would be leveraging our current licensed um, bars, you know? Or maybe if, if our, what's our permitting, or what's our permitting process? Is it complex? Is it something where they would be limited within that scope to, you know, be able to accomplish that goal? Four-way, for example, wanted to put something in their, their, their parking lot.
That's our parking lot, actually.
Oh, is it?
It's public parking, so for four-way to go ahead and, you know, that would be an issue where we would be giving special dispensation to the four-way preferential, could be construed as preferential treatment. Um, I think we'd have to, but anyway, yeah, that's public, most of it's public parking. There's some, there is some private four-way parking there that they could use.
And, but, and to your point, when, when you think about the bars cross-section in Swamaco, I can't think of many locations besides Vickory Village where you've got an area where you might have one establishment, maybe just even across the road from another one.
Well, there's Town Line.
Town Line across.
And Doosie's, but we don't want people walking across.
And that's also now Howard.
That would be concerning.
Right?
We have comfort suites that is going to be jam-packed with people. There's a bar and eatery at the gutter, if it's even called the gutter anymore.
Oh, oh.
The bowling alley.
Country Inn. Yeah, okay.
So if you're staying there, I would just, I, I mean, my thought is simple. You buy a drink and you want to drink it on the way over to your motel room. What, I, I don't see the problem. You know, it's business in our village. And if we're for push for business in this village, we got to relax on a couple things once in a while on that.
See, I don't see a problem either, but I feel like we already have a solution. So like, if, if it is the Country Inn who wants to have, allow that, and, and the bowling alley allows drinks, just ask for a temporary permit that takes over a portion of that parking lot.
Yeah.
Then you got it. You know what I mean? Then that's where I'm like.
But at my point as a business owner, why do I need to get a permit for everything that goes on? I mean, we have so many permits in this village that we should be able to sit and look at our, our businesses and everything else and say, you know what? You do pay high taxes. You do pay for all this. You know, we're going to give you a week that we know we're going to be busy. My understanding from public health and safety was we're too far away from Lambeau. There's 87% of the motels in Brown County that the NFL took up. There's people going to Wausau, there's people going to Madison. This is going to be the biggest draft in the history of the NFL. And if we're going to sit back and not do anything, to me, that's a slap to, to my face as a business owner. We're trying to draw people into our community.
Before you had mentioned a mile, and someone had mentioned a mile, that seems pretty far. A mile away. And what would be a reasonable number?
I, I'm struggling with all this, you guys. I'm really struggling with this. You know, and, and I appreciate your position. It's a slap in the face to a business owner. I mean, that's pretty extreme when you're talking about an individual who 300 yards away from your place, right? Is your, I mean, let's face it, right? You're not going to have a whole lot of people who are going to be walking a whole lot of distance to get to your place, because you're way out there, right? So you're going to have a handful of folks out by you, maybe, who are Airbnbs, who can't wait 300 feet for a beer? Really? Come on. And what are they going to do? They can buy a 12-pack at your bar, they can go over, they can buy a 12-pack at your bar, they can step outside the door where it's nice and dark and they can open that beer, and if they're, if, if Officer Kasich isn't there, they're going to get away with it, and they're going to be, be back. To me, if we open this up, you look outside right now, look at, look at how dark it is. It's going to be a heck of a lot darker in April, and they're going to have people who have had a whole bunch to drink, and they're going to be walking down our streets. Um, you know, we have public health and safety, and there are individuals who are experienced with law enforcement and public health and safety. We don't even have Green Bay telling us right now what they're going to do. And here, we're getting ready to jump the gun and say, hey, welcome to Swamaco, uh, the saloon's open. Grab your six shooter and march down the road and have at her. I, I, I'm just, I'm not there. And now all of these things that we're talking about, let's make an exception for a mile, let's make an exception for 300 yards, let's make an exception for 500 yards. Okay, great. Let's get a consensus on the exception. And then you tell me who's going to do the enforcement for that, because you know where Officer Kasich's going to be? He's going to be down at Lambeau Field along with officers from all over the state who are being called in because there's a manpower shortage.
That's a problem with the exception.
That's a huge problem with the exception.
That's where you can't pick a reasonable number. The best way is till the temp, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, my last point is this. So we, Vickory Village is the locus for all of this. That's where all of this activity, this, it's going to be a hive. You're right, those businesses, there's not going to be any slap in the face for those businesses, because they're going to be busy as all get out, every one of them. And if they really feel like they need to expand that into some sort of, you know, open intoxicant zone or whatever it might be called, they're a, they've, they've come to us many times and asked us for things. They haven't come forward and asked us for this yet. And, and if they do, I think we can entertain that. But I just, I, I don't see the point in this. I don't see the point. That's, that's my last statement. So last statements from anybody?
I agree. I, I think we have a process in place, and if we play around with it, it's, it's just not going to make sense, no matter how much we play, because we're never going to find the perfect little distance away.
I mean, we talked about less administration, less permitting, less governance, right? What we would do with this is impose even more governance, potentially, and more cost.
And be sure to be wrong.
I don't know. Anybody else last comments?
Without the ability to add additional enforcement, just to accommodate that, I think that leaving it to the businesses in those little pockets, like, that would make sense for them to submit a permit, something special they want to put on at their bank.
Last comments on this end, anyone? No? So is there a necessary motion or no motion? Is there anyone who wishes to make a motion on this this evening?
I'll make a motion to that we remain with the ordinances that we have in place right now with our liquor laws.
So trustee, trustee Andrews has made a motion that we adhere to the current ordinances and laws and direction that public health and safety provided us. Did I encapsulate that?
Correct.
So the motion is from trustee Andrews. Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Uh, trustee McKeefrey has seconded that motion.
If something changes dramatically for whatever reason, we can still revisit. But.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor, and that motion has been seconded. Let's do a roll call on this, please.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Netto?
Name.
Trustee Romes?
Name.
Trustee McKeefrey?
Aye.
Trustee Stevens?
Aye.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
President Van Rossum?
Aye.
Motion carries five to two.
Okay, thank you. Item 8C this evening, 8C, is the 2024 Contingency Fund Request. Administrator Caker.
Thank you. So at the October 10th budget day, there was a number of items that we talked about pulling from the 25 budget and potentially using the 2024 contingency fund to pay for these items. There is $20,000 left remaining in the contingency fund for 2024. Those three items were the records retention storage, the historic downtown sign, and then emergency siren battery. We did go into detail on October 10th about these items, so I won't necessarily rehash it, but if there are questions, definitely happy to answer those. So the decision for you tonight would be to potentially approve one, two, or all three or none, using the available balance from the 2024 contingency fund. And that fund would be able to support all three options if desired. Thank you.
Do we, um, do we have any idea whether Brown County is going to help us out or not?
I'll find out tomorrow.
Okay.
So in that example, well, if this is approved tonight, we would still wait to see if Brown County will pay for it, and if they do, then we just obviously wouldn't use the funds to buy that battery.
So, so in lieu of Brown County paying for that, do you have a bill prepared to send them for our activity?
We can make it happen.
I appreciate that. So should Brown County refuse and Swamaco pay that $3,000 for the county's emergency sirens? Do we have a bill with an appropriate amount of markup on it prepared to send? And if you wish, you can send it to me and I'll go and give it to Troy Streckenbach. He loves me. He doesn't really, he doesn't even probably know me. All right. Other ones? Anybody?
Do you want that in the motion? The bill?
No, I think we got that down.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I'd like to move that we approve the expense of one, for $17,660.75 for illicit expenses above using available balance from the 2024 contingency fund.
Trustee Romes has made a motion to approve $17,660.75 for the three contingency items, the records retention storage, $8,160.75, the historic downtown signage, $6,500, and the emergency siren battery, $3,000. Is there a second to this?
I'll, I'll second that.
I had a second from, just under the wire, I had a second from trustee Netto on this. All right, very well. Any other questions or comments? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Netto?
Aye.
Trustee Romes?
Aye.
Trustee McKeefrey?
Aye.
Trustee Stevens?
Aye.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
President Van Rossum?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero.
Thank you. All right. Item 8D this evening is the possible cancellation of the November 4th, 2024 Village Board meeting due to the November 5th, 2024 election. Administrator Caker.
Thank you. So we typically do this, so barring any objection from the Village Board, I'd like I'd like to cancel the November fifth village board meeting with respect to the election happening the following day. Sorry, the November fourth village board meeting saves on some, saves our clerk to be fresh for the next morning. And if there is anything that comes up in the next couple of weeks where I feel like we need to have a meeting, we can still have it. But unless there is something like that, I would appreciate the village board's willingness to cancel that meeting.
Does this require a motion?
It does not. But if there's anyone that objects, we'll have it.
Is there general consensus? Are we okay with this?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you so much for the support. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, you're still going to be working.
Yeah.
It's not a day off.
We're just going to be watching.
In case you needed a reminder that it wasn't going to be a day off. Okay, very good. All right. Item eight E this evening is commission's committee appointments. So I have asked that we replace the trustee position planning and zoning with trustee Stevens to take that role that trustee Schneider had had. That gives us a full planning and zoning commission. And trustee McKeefry, I've asked that you be appointed to public health and safety committee. That's typically a, it's a, it's a good place to start when you first get here. So. And as trustee Stevens will say, sometimes it's a, it's a very short stint.
Very short stint, but complicated.
Oh, awesome sauce.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept these appointments?
So moved.
Trustee Romes has made the motion to accept these, approve these appointments. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Andrews on that. Very well. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Motion carries six zero. Boy, that's two appointments in one evening. Doesn't get much better than this. All right, item number nine, fire department items, item nine A is 2024 Fire Department Staffing Study Report. Chief Burtler.
Thank you. All right. The Village of Swamaco Strategic Plan of 2024 to '26. Call for the updating of the 2019 Fire Department Staffing Model Study. An ad hoc committee was formed earlier this year to evaluate the Fire Department's current staffing model as well as evaluate the current operations and future needs of the department. Before you is the memo, which is intended to serve as a guide for the village board and an informational document to help keep the community informed of any potential needs. And obviously, any formal action will require village board approval. Conclusions of the studies were as followed. Recruitment retention of on-call personnel needs to be a primary focus of the department and should be an ongoing effort to reduce the need for full-time firefighters. Number two, grants should be applied for to help offset EMS costs and to seek funding to improve this service level to either an EMT or paramedic engine, but not to fiscally burden the village. And number three, the department is looking to promote two part-time firefighters to full-time over the next one to three years to provide the desired coverage and to meet the standard of two in, two out. Once again, this memo serves only as a guide for strategic decisions the board may make in regards to the Fire Department. And is only a guide as well. Please let me know if there's any questions or if trustee Eckert or Stevens have any additional input.
You might want to share with those that weren't at the budget meeting what was proposed in the budget about moving part-time to full-time.
Yeah, so the committee, after all said and done, recommended that the two part-timers this year move up to full-time. But in the budget.
Not everybody.
Not everybody, correct. Overall consensus recommended that. We, I'd only put in the budget just the one up to, from part-time to up to full-time. So as the current budget stands, but that was a recommendation of the committee. But obviously, like you said, looking at the, trying to be fiscally responsible as well, so. But that was a recommendation of the, of the committee.
Trustee Eckert, go ahead.
I've got a couple of things.
Of course.
Okay, the Fire Department responds to EMS calls with county rescue. I still can't say I'm fully on board with that. However, as a village, that's what we've decided, that our Fire Department responds along with county rescue for those. So if we are, if we are going to continue with the Fire Department responding alongside county rescue, then a third position is in order. But I think it should be one a year. I don't think we need to add both of them this year. As far as grants go, basically, you know, when you said so is not to burden the village. I mean, I'm kind of a stickler on as far as like if you were to get grants for personnel, that's where you can really stick a village because suddenly you're adding these people and then the grant runs out and then we're stuck at budget time having to add all these people. So funding, I would say grant funding more for equipment.
Correct, yep. I think you and I are on the same page with that.
Good, good. I also talked to you two about having maybe the Fire Commission look at the job descriptions and kind of maybe be more specific because the, the people with the regular hours, the full-time and the part-time people with regular hours should be the ones cleaning and maintaining and taking care of that fire station. The paint-on-call people shouldn't be doing that.
And they are the ones that do that.
Okay. And maybe if it needs to be spelled out.
Yep, we can definitely do that.
Your call or their call, but.
We can submit those to the, to the Fire Commission, so. Thank you.
That's what I got.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My only input is that any, any plan or study should have some costs associated with the different things. I would like to see this included so that people can read this and understand, hey, this didn't come free. This costs money and this is what it costs.
That's a really good point. Yep. So in any, any business entity typically has, has, you know, they have their one-year budget, but they also have a three and a five and a ten-year plan, right? So that's visioning out for the future. Do you have a three- or five-year plan?
I mean, we, we do internally and then we also with, with the village budget as well. It looks out five years, so that is, I guess, forecasted in there.
So you do have a three- and five-year plan? Do you review that with administrator Kaker?
We go over it every year.
Yeah, pretty much.
You know, and maybe at some point, maybe next year for budget plan, next year during budget planning, a vision into what that three- and five-year plan looks like and how we're progressing?
Definitely.
You know, and then we can compare that, a board, we can compare that to look at what the growth trajectories are for the Village of Swamaco and look at some other factors to help us make that decision. You know, do we have enough staff? Do we have too little staff?
Well, maybe as far as staff, I mean, because you're looking ultimately at getting four people for that engine.
Correct.
And so.
That's the.
So we're going to have one this year and then maybe one in the next few. But I mean, it shouldn't really be changing all that drastic other than kind of what you said ahead of time. Because you're, you're kind of preparing us for that.
Correct.
One this year and then for budget reasons, maybe add that, that fourth person another year.
Yeah.
Just so we're not sticking it.
And we talked about that in the, in our discussions, you know? Kind of same thing, you know, if we see a significant growth out here in Swamaco, kind of like Howard and Hobart and those communities have, you know, we would not only need to add more firefighters, but officers and DPW. It's encompassing, so.
So it's kind of, it was a long-term plan, I mean, or a short-term, but it was kind of looking down the road, too.
Yeah, it really didn't have a lot of changes from the 2019 staffing study. So if you looked at that study, it talked about getting to four full-time firefighters by 2027-ish. It was 2027 or beyond. And we're right on, right on track. So we'll have three next year and then finding that fourth is going to be difficult, especially when it relates to the levy limits that we had a discussion about at the all-day budget meeting. I think that's going to be the, the big hurdle for us to find room in our levy limit to support another full-time person, regardless of where that is within our, our organization.
And beyond that, you don't want to give me a heart attack by adding too many. So you better not.
We don't want to, not until your term is over.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
And there is another element to all this. So the, the new state shared revenue law implemented some maintenance of effort requirements on municipalities. And the long, long story short of that is you have to certify every year that you meet certain requirements or a maintenance of effort within your fire, police, and EMS services. All of that to say is you can't spend less on your Fire Department in one year than the last. And if you do, there's a reduction to your state shared revenue. So you want to make sure that you're not adding too quickly and then realizing you need to back off on that because now you're going to get penalized with your state shared revenue. So having this incremental approach, I think, is, is the right approach for the village.
Which is the reason why you were speaking to the grants? Because we have other villages that have added personnel using grants.
Correct.
No, I said it long before that.
We don't, we don't want to, we don't want to go down that road.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. And I think it's important for us to recognize, too, is that this isn't an incremental hire. It's we're pulling part-time people out of the system.
Correct.
So it's not a full dollar value of a firefighter. It's a portion of it.
That's correct. Okay, I think we have consensus. Thank you for the information. Thank you. And thank you, trustee Eckert and Stevens as well. All right, item number 10 this evening is the planning and zoning. Item 10A is ordinance 2024-12, amending Swamaco Municipal Code, Chapter Two, General Government, and Chapter 16 Building Code, eliminating the Design Review Committee. Zoning Administrator Dunks.
Thank you. Basically, what this is doing is transferring the duties of the Design Review Committee over to the zoning administrator, myself. With the evolution of our codes and whatnot, it's all in, pretty much in our codes now as far as may scenario requirements and what, that didn't exist when this committee was originally formed. Our sign ordinance is pretty basic on what, what they need to do. Since we went to the email committee format, we haven't had a single, that opportunity gave the village board. If we didn't have full 3O agreement on something, it came to the village board. Well, that's never happened. It's just a rubber stamp. We just think it's a process that just isn't necessary anymore. They still have the ability to appeal to the village board, should I deny a sign.
Okay. Are there questions for zoning administrator Dunks on this item? If there are, then I would offer a motion to approve ordinance 2024-12, amending Chapters Two and 16, eliminating the Design Review Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from trustee Andrews. You know, just because this is, this is kind of important, well, it is, we have to do a roll call. So let's do a roll call.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee McKeefry.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Neto.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero.
Excellent. All right, discussion on future agenda items. Anyone have future agenda item? Anyone? Our next meeting would be November.
Well, we'll have, remember, we have the budget hearing on Monday, November 11th at six o'clock? And then our next regularly scheduled board meeting is Monday, November 18th.
Okay.
11:11?
11:11.
I can remember that.
Okay.
Side note, the members of your historical preservation commission want to thank you for the approval of that sign this evening. As we have three of them back there.
Well, thank you, thank you for bringing the sign forward. I think it's going to be a really, it's going to be a really great addition down there.
When will it be done?
The post could go in as early as the end of this week. The sign itself will get placed probably in spring.
Okay, before the draft?
That depends on how fast they can get that sign designed.
I would think you'd want that done before the draft.
Okay.
I guess I have one thing. I would like to drill down into this law enforcement call summary.